Welcome to the House of Representatives for the Borough of Ringwood. Today is Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. Because of the coronavirus emergency, the following provision shall apply to the conduct of this meeting. Attendance at the meeting shall be limited to the municipal manager and essential staff at the Borough Hall and council chambers. Members of the municipal council will be in attendance via Zoom. The meeting shall be televised on public access channel 77, recorded and broadcast on channel 77 and on YouTube. The public may also observe and participate in this meeting via Zoom. Statement of compliance, please.
Adequate notice of this business meeting has been provided according to the Open Public Meeting Law, P.L. 1975, Chapter 231, setting forth the time, date, place, and purpose of the special meeting by Resolution Number 2020-174, adopted August 18th, 2020, through a legal notice published in the Suburban Trends issue of August 23rd, 2020, and through notices emailed to the following named newspapers and posted on the bulletin board at the Borough Hall, August 19th, 2020, The Suburban Trends and The Bergen Record.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spear?
Here.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Here.
Ferretti? Ferretti?
He's got to paddle closer to shore.
He was here.
He's here and there.
Matty Olandis?
Here.
McCracken?
Here.
O'Keefe?
Here.
Also present Borough Managers, Director Department of Public Works, Scott Heck, Municipal Clerk Nicole Lender-Meyer, Borough Attorney Richard J. Klimak, and Sean Isken, Professional Engineer and Quarry Engineer. Also, just a reminder that council members must be on video and they must address questions to the mayor, and in turn, the mayor will address the questions to Mr. Heck, Mr. Klimak, or others in attendance. And I realize tonight there is a problem because of this storm, and Councilman Bolton is having a problem.
Mayor, this is Councilman Ferretti. I am here. My video went out and then came right back. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance was before the meeting started. Tonight's meeting is a public hearing on the application of Saddle Mountain Van Warden Sanding gravel of Ringwood for body license renewal. Mr. Klimak, could you please summarize the previous meeting and the process for this evening?
Yes. Are the Saddle Mountain representatives here?
Mr. Klimak, there are four people in attendance in the audience: Dirk Brain, Scott Brain, Noah Ulmer, and Susan G. I don't see...
Mr. Vogel on?
I don't see Mr. Vogel at this point.
I prefer to wait till he gets here.
Okay.
Well, it's up to you folks.
Yeah, I guess we can wait a few minutes.
Maybe Mr. Brain could check.
Let me, let me...
Maybe he's having difficulty connecting.
Let me ask Mr. Brain, hold on.
Yeah. Gotcha.
Scott, how are you? Are you with Mr. Vogel, or is he signing in separately?
No, I'm not with him.
Okay. Maybe you can give him a call?
Yeah.
Okay.
Call him now.
Okay.
Okay, we'll wait then.
I'll put you on mute for a minute, okay?
Okay. Did Mr. Vogel confirm that he was going to be on tonight?
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry, Councilman.
Did Mr. Vogel confirm that he was going to be here tonight?
Uh, well, I...
He sent us a letter this morning.
Yeah. I know about the meeting. There's still be a connection problem.
Yeah, we reconfirmed with... We sent him another link again today, so...
Yeah, Scott, I don't know what happened, but when I went to sign on, I had to join Zoom. I literally had to create an account on Zoom to join. I've never had to do that. I've done, I don't know, about hundreds of Zoom calls, but I've done a lot of Zoom calls. And for some reason, for some reason, you had to do it on this phone. Just talking to Jerry. Jerry can't figure out how to literally create an account to sign on.
Can he join by phone? Let me see what I can do here.
You know, usually you just click on the link.
Scott, can Mr. Brain email him with the link?
No, he has the link. He got the link like I got today, but it's just not letting you join. It's saying you have to set up a Zoom account.
Yeah, Zoom tightened up some of their security, so I will... Let me see. Let me see if I can... I don't have his email, so I'd have to look here.
Do you want me to go send it to you?
Like the last meeting, Scott, you just click the link and it would bring you right to the meeting. Now it's, again, you know, asking you to set up an account on Zoom.
All right, just bear with me. Let me...
Jerry, try to... Okay, what happens, Jerry, is you set up the account, then it actually sends you an email. Now, I didn't have to enter a password. When you set up a Zoom account, it then will send you an email. You open up that email from Zoom, and you just press Activate Your Zoom Account. And then once you do that, I think you go back to the invite that Ringwood sent today, and then you should be able to log in. I think that's what I did.
Nicole, can you get me Mr. Vogel's email?
You need his email?
Yes. I don't know that you want to necessarily publish it over the air. Nicole's going to get it for me.
Okay. Dick obviously has it. He's trying.
Okay.
That's why I have your grandchildren with you. How would you have them with me?
I almost called one of my kids in.
More one of your grandchildren.
Then they call you stupid, right? Yeah. They look at you funny. Yeah. You have to set up a Zoom account, Jerry. That's the only way you're going to get in. If you go back to the invite...
Hold on, I'm going to send them a different thing.
Scott's going to send you, I think, another... Right? You're going to try to send another link, Scott?
I'm going to try, yeah. I don't know what's going to do.
You're trying to set up the account?
I sent them a new link to be a panelist, so that it's direct, Mr. Brain, so hopefully he can just...
Scott sent you another email.
It came from Zoom. It doesn't come from me.
That's not letting the log in either.
Yeah, he doesn't have a Zoom account.
Are one of your grandkids around? Maybe it would be a little bit easier if you put the app on his phone real quick. Yeah, Jerry, you don't have it on your phone, do you? You don't have like a Zoom account on your phone?
When I had that issue, I had the option of hitting Join Via Google, and I hit that button and I was right in. Before I hit that button, I was also stressing over it. This happened to me a few meetings ago.
Jerry, can you... I wanted to ask you to join. Can you like join via Google? Be it now? Jerry, maybe you can... You can also dial, I believe, right? You can dial into the meeting. Want to try that?
Couldn't you involve Ulo's power?
I did. We had some flickers before, maybe an hour ago, and then around 10 after, I'll call it. It flickered and then stayed out. Seems to be a few blocks around here.
All right. I also took off the requirement to register first, so that he can get in. But short of that, I'm not sure what else to do. Can you dial?
He's trying. So what are you doing there?
I don't know. I've never had this problem.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to work. You definitely got to set up a Zoom account. Yeah, it says... Do you have a button? Don't you get the email from Zoom and then it says Activate Account? And you press Activate, and you press that button? Activate Account? All right, do you have another thing? Use this link to your browser? Click on that and see what that does. Yeah. All right, well, maybe your account's activated, and why don't you go back to the original invite, and then when you click the link to join, it should actually populate your name and email, because that's what you put in there, right? So you went back to that and did that, and it didn't say Click To Join Meeting?
I just sent him a link with all the controls taken off, so he should be able to just get in. Mayor, you have seven people in attendance at this point, just so that you know.
Scott sent another email, I believe.
Completely unrestricted.
Mr. Klimak, we need Mr. Vogel.
I'm sorry?
We need Mr. Vogel to be on before we can...
Yes. You there, Jerry?
No, no one's here. He says he can't hear you.
The only thing that I can offer is he can call my cellphone and he can participate that way, Mr. Klimak.
I didn't come in clear, Scott. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The only thing that I can offer is he can call... I mean, we have seven attendees, so if the link works, I can offer him to call my cellphone and he could participate that way, I guess.
On the Zoom?
Well, no, you'd only hear him, you wouldn't see him.
Do you want to try? I mean, you called Dick's cellphone, too.
I would assume, except that we're being recorded here, so it's probably more important that it comes here.
Right.
Jerry, what if you call Scott's phone? I don't know if that would work, but... The last cell?
No, you can't use the last one. They're all independent. He has to use the existing one that I sent him.
He used the last meeting now. All right, Jerry, now what?
I think it would be best for you to call Scott's cellphone, and then we can receive from there.
Yeah.
I'm going to send him my contact information, and now it's up to him to decide.
Yeah. Let's try something else now.
All right, I just sent my cellphone to that email.
Wait, Scott just sent you his cellphone number, Jerry. Do you want to call him?
All right, Scott, while you're talking to Jerry, I'm going to put you on mute for a minute?
Yeah, okay.
If you need to unmute yourself, just do that. So, Mr. Klimak, what do we do at this point?
Well, let's wait a little while longer, which we get Mr. Vogel. Because of the technical issues, I don't... It's not his fault, I can understand it. But if we can't get him in a reasonable period of time, my suggestion would be just carry this to another date, because I don't think his difficulty is what we call contumacious. He's not trying to be difficult. It's technology today, it's confusing to a lot of people. Because he was... He did connect at the last meeting, but there's some glitch or some other technical problem here.
I have a call-in number that he can try, Mr. Brain?
I'm sorry, you just...
I have a call-in number he can call.
Scott, he's going to call you right now. Jerry, Jerry, I'm going to hang up. Well, this is important.
Hello? Hello, Mr. Vogel. On the bottom of the email, you have a piece of paper in front of you. I can give you a phone number to call. 1-646... 5588656. The webinar ID is 93474932175. And the passcode is 196283. And that'll bring you right into Zoom. Right on your cellphone, yep. You won't have any video, but you'll have audio and you'll be in the meeting. Well, I'm not sure what to tell you. Well, okay, Mr. Vogel, we're not going to have this conversation like that. There's eight people who signed in the same way you did, and there was no problem, but well, how about you call in and you explain to Mr. Klimak exactly what you told me? I'm just giving you the opportunity that you can call in and you can tell them that, and whatever you two decide is okay. Okay? Bye now. Mr. Vogel's going to call you.
By phone?
He's going to dial in by Zoom. I was just giving him an opportunity to express his disdain. Just for the record, Mr. Klimak, the same link that went to you and Scott Brain went to him, it's the exact same email that I have here with the link, so it's not a matter of him not being able to sign in, it's a matter of... The link works because Scott Brain is in and you're in, so... Thanks, Nicole.
Okay.
Where's Jerry?
Mr. Vogel, you just have to unmute yourself. It's probably F1. Yep, we can hear you. Yep, we have you.
Yep.
I'm in.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry about the delay. I don't know what it was, but we're in now.
Okay, Mr. Klimak, if you could please summarize the previous meeting and...
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At the previous meeting, May 21st, 2020, Mr. Isken, our consulting engineer, testified regarding various aspects of the license application, and he's here that he can reiterate. I'll just generalize. He basically stated that the operational aspects of his inspection and review of the maps were in order, okay? The key issues outstanding were the performance bond and the monitoring wells, okay? By resolution on that date, you carried the matter forward, reading the minutes, was carried... A motion made by Deputy Mayor Spear, to carry for 90 days, so the monitoring wells could be installed. The discussion regarding the bond... wells could be installed. The discussion regarding the bond would continue. So, we are here today to discuss those two issues. Now, regarding the performance bond, just to give you a little background of what a performance bond is, it's only a docket bond. It's something issued generally by insurance company. And what it says, it's a performance guarantee that if a developer does not do what they're supposed to do, the insurance company will pay to have it done. Either they'll give you the money, whether it might be a municipality, or the insurance company will, if that's the way the deal is, hire staff, engineers, et cetera, to complete the job. A performance guarantee is a technical mechanism to guarantee performance. What happens is the agency, whether it's a planning board or a municipality or mayor council, gets a report from an applicant laying out all the improvements, the cost of the improvements, et cetera. They're reviewed by the agency's engineer, and that's a term whether or not they're accurate. Then that schedule is then make part of the bond. The bond is then developed into the amount, whether it's a million dollars, five million dollars, 10 million dollars, okay? Then, in the event there's a default, what occurs then is that the agency then goes to the insurance company, whoever else would, or could be a bank, whoever issued that bond, and say, "There's a default here. We want that cash to complete the job." I'll give you a simple, a more simple example. Say, a typical subdivision for houses, somebody wants to lay out 20 houses in undeveloped land, and what they'll do is they have to put in roads and curbs and sewers, drainage and all that. And suppose they start the first house, the second house, they start on the roads, they start on the sewers, but they default, they go bankrupt or whatever. They're not there any longer. Then the municipality, like Greenwood, go to the bondholder, that would probably be the insurance company, and say, "Hey, this person's in default. It's gonna cost $9 million to complete this job", by way of example. And let's assume it's a $10 or $12 million bond. Then the insurance company would turn that money over to the municipality. The municipality then hire contractors, et cetera, and use that money. The case here is, all we have here is, the quarry has been excavating, and there is now a cavity of about 3,500,000 cubic yards. What we're looking for is the reclamation. The ultimate reclamation of this quarry would be to fill that cavity, okay, and then at a certain level, to make it stable, and then there would be a makeover, okay? And Mr. Isken can explain that in more detail. That is the final reclamation. And there would be vegetation, there would be water controls, there would be water courses to move the water from that lake as it overflows into Westbrook Road, et cetera. So, the ultimate reclamation plan is a lake with an average depth of 25 feet, okay? That lake is about, and I'm just generalized, is about 380 feet elevation, okay, or 340 feet elevation. As I said, the average depth would be 25 feet. It could be deeper at some points, but that would be the average depth. So, if that quarry operation were to start now, our target would be to fill that cavity, to bring in fill, in other words, 3.5 million cubic yards went out to bring in, to bring in or get 3.5 million cubic yards, okay? Bring it in, have the engineers do it, have construction people oversee it, put in the spillways, fill it with water, and that would be the final product. Now, a performance bond, as I said, is to guarantee against default. So, what we look for in our ordinances during the next three years, if there's a default, what costs would be incurred if the borough had to step in, okay, and take over this job, all right? Now, the typical way this is done is there are various publications, industrial and construction publications, that are highly regarded by their peers, and they set forth average costs to do something, to bring in fill, to build a skyscraper, put up a bridge, okay? One of these publications called RS Means. And throughout, Mr. Isken has been asking the quarry to prepare an estimate based upon the information in RS Means. Now, the quarry's position is as follows. Regarding the 3.5 million cubic yards that would be necessary to fill that cavity in a three-year period, their position is, I'm reading a chart prepared by Dykstra Associates PC, December 7, and revised June 12, 2019. The key part is, "The earthwork and placement of soil backfill, quantity 3,507,500 yards, unit cost a dollar", and then there's an asterisk. "Unit cost of suitable soil and topsoil are representative of the cost of placing and grading material that is available on site or will be imported from other sources at no cost." The quarry's basic position is, instead of putting up a very large performance bond to cover all that material that has to come in, they're saying they can get it at no cost or very cheap if there's a default. The position, our concern is, if there's a default, the quarry's not in the picture. We do not rely upon them to finish the job. The borough has to finish the job. The borough has to go out to the market and get whatever, to get these, to get fill and all the other accretiments that go with giving us a final reclamation of this property. As I said, we don't want a cavity here. That is the basic dispute. In fact, Mr. Vogel just recently, a letter said, "In that regard, as confirmed by a recent engineering study, it is essential to understand that the amount of material to accomplish reclamation is currently located within the quarry facility. And you'd only be relocated to accomplish reclamation." So, now, the position seems to be that they're saying it's there. The response of Mr. Isken was, "No recent engineering study has been provided to demonstrate 3,507,500 cubic yards is available on site. This volume of material is essentially equal to excluding swell factors, the existing pit void. In order to obtain this volume of fill, it would have to be excavated from the site. This would require extensive excavation, blasting, and create a similar-sized pit. This work could be done at, this work could not be done at no cost to the borough." So, you can see where our basic division is, and that's true to decide, you know, which side, which side is the presentation of Mr. Isken or the presentation of the quarry, which side you think is the better view, okay? The second item is the monitoring wells. As I said, the resolution from May required that they be installed. I don't know if they have been installed, but that's a pending, that is a pending issue. Now, if I could, I'd like to have Mr. Isken go first, and this morning I can swear him in, okay? Mr. Isken?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. You swear a testimony about the end of this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, help you God?
I do.
Okay. Mr. Isken, regarding issues concerning reclamation, would you explain them? What the ultimate reclamation plan is, or where the quarry is right now with respect to what it would take to get the reclamation?
Yeah. The reclamation plan is to backfill the existing open pit and the high wall to a slope, you know, that's safe. So, right now, for example, there, based on the end-of-year 2019 topography provided by the quarry, there is roughly 330 vertical feet of high wall. The bottom of the pit is at about elevation 200. The bottom of the proposed lake, based on the reclamation plan submitted with the renewal application, is, I think it's around 320. And the top of the lake is at 388. So, just to get to the bottom of the lake, there needs to be 120 feet of fill brought in. The quarry, in their reclamation estimate, stated that it would take 3.5 million yards of cubic fill to meet the reclamation plan. We did some calculations, and that, you know, we're pretty close to that number, so we're not gonna dispute that volume of fill. The question is, from the borough's perspective, if the quarry were to default, where and at what cost does the borough obtain 3.5 million cubic yards of material to backfill the pit and reclaim it? And then, in addition to that, there's seeding and tree planting that needs to occur. There's a spillway that needs to be built at the lake, and those features are built into the bond. We don't have really any issue with them. The big issue is, I cannot recommend to the borough that the borough, if the quarry were to default, can obtain 3.5 million cubic yards of material, either from offsite, from onsite, or a combination thereof. The letter that the quarry recently presented that the material is available on site, that hasn't been shown to me. There is area on site that has not been affected yet, and we estimate, based on the amount of, there's some waste material on site that's a result of the stone processing, and some overburden that's been stripped off. We're estimating there's about 450,000 cubic yards, and what that leaves, you know, 3.05 million yards. So, for to get that material on site, well, we've got to excavate 3.5 million yards. That can't be done at no cost. So, this has been my comments through the prior renewal application and this renewal application. This is nothing new. If I go back through history, there's at least eight times in writing that I have presented that this is not an acceptable method. And look, I work in other states that do the same thing. Every other state, Pennsylvania, Ohio, West Virginia, Maryland, they all have reclamation bonds, exactly what we're asking for. So, this is nothing that is, that we've invented. This is standard for the industry.
Mr. Isken, if we, the council demanded a bond, what elements would go into that bond?
Well, the bond needs to be based on a calculation that is publicly recognized. So, for example, when, you know, you mentioned in a subdivision, well, you know, and I referenced RS Means, that's a standard construction estimating publication that's put out every year, and it's sensitized for whatever region of the country you're in, and it is used to estimate construction costs. That's one method. The state of Pennsylvania, for example, has cost estimate guidelines for reclamation based on the cost they have incurred to reclaim sites where the operator defaulted. So, there's publications out there using real-life numbers to perform the work that needs to be done to reclaim the site.
Looking at Mr. Dykstra's worksheet, do you have that before you?
Yes.
Okay. The place is a value of $1 per yard on the 3.5 million cubic yards. Do you take issue with that?
Yes.
And what is your position on that?
Well, his, if you read the footnote, that $1 is the cost of placing and grading material, and I'm reading from his estimate, that is available on site or will be imported from other sources at no cost. That's the section I have problem with you. I cannot recommend to the borough that you can obtain 3.5 million yards of material, either on-site or offsite, at no cost.
Would you explain, would you describe, again, what the ultimate reclamation site would look like, starting with the water feature of the lake?
Yeah.
Which is the ultimate goal when this quarry is done?
The ultimate goal is, the high walls are to be sloped at a 2:1 slope, so that, you know, somebody can't fall off a 300-foot high wall. That slope would tow out in a lake feature that's an average of 25 feet deep. I didn't calculate the average, like, at the very center is elevation 320, and the top is 88. So, that's a vertical distance of 68 feet, but if you take the average depth, it's probably pretty close. So, there's a lake that would be on the property. The area surrounding the lake would be regraded, revegetated, trees planted, and then there's an outlet structure that needs to be built at the outlet of the lake to regulate the elevation of the water and allow the water to discharge to the drainage system of Westbrook.
Looking at the worksheet, to include all those elements, seed mix, trees, water controls, spillway structure, remove asphalt driveways and concrete puddings, the estimate is 4,472,164,000 by the quarry engineer. Do you agree with that figure?
No.
And your major point of disagreement is on?
Item 1.
Ergonomic?
Yeah, the quantity of soil backfill at no cost. That's not included in this bond amount.
Okay. Regarding the monitoring wells, are you, do you know if they have been installed?
I am not aware of it.
Have you approved a monitoring well design?
Yes, to 2016.
Okay. And that was a design, was that a design presented by the quarry engineers?
Well, yeah, they're engineers, they're hydrologists.
Okay. Okay. I have no further questions on this. As you recall, we had extensive testimony at the last hearing date over, as I explained, operations, blasting, et cetera. I don't know if anybody has any questions of the council regarding what we discussed today or those issues of last meeting?
Does anyone have any questions?
Any comments? Okay, Mr. Vogel, do you have any questions or comments?
I have lots of comments. I don't have any questions of Mr. Isken.
All right. Okay. Well, there's no, okay, then, if it's okay, Mayor, then you could turn the floor over to Mr. Vogel. If that's your pleasure.
Yes, Mr. Vogel?
Okay, thank you for the opportunity. At the outset, let me, let me just make this one observation. I'm surprised that the bond is even an issue here. We've had some differences over the years about various aspects of the quarry, but for what's really over 20 years now, 24 years, we have provided a bond, a reclamation bond. You have to understand that the reclamation bond supports a reclamation plan. We filed a reclamation plan when the original license was issued, and that has been the reclamation plan through all of the 20-odd years. And each time, we supported the reclamation plan with a bond which has been on file, and no one has rejected it. And quite frankly, I never thought the bond would ever come to be a problem, because it never came to be an issue until we reached this point now, where there is a suggestion that we have to go out on the retail market to buy fill to put on the site. Number 1, it's not so much we disagree with it, it's just the fact that that doesn't exist. And I know I have a lot of respect for Mr. Isken, but there are times when he is abjectly incorrect. I don't-
I don't think intentionally, but he just doesn't understand it. He's made some references to Pennsylvania and other states. I will say, no bond has ever been required of any quarry in New Jersey of any magnitude that has to do with his analysis. And let me just indicate one other thing. We filed this application for renewal on June 13, 2019. All right? Since that time, we've had two review letters from Mr. Iskin. One on March 10 and one on May 19. All right? And during that time, we had hearing dates on March 10 and May 21. In neither of those letters was the issue raised. Does that mean you can't raise the issue now? Certainly not. You have the right to raise the issue. We had a meeting that was scheduled on August 11 that you canceled because of, you know, the unfortunate storm. But we still hadn't received a letter that said anything about the bond. The two letters that had come on March 10 and on May 19 didn't say a word about the bond. It said, "Yet to be determined." Now, after having had two hearings, an adjourned hearing, just before this hearing, we get a letter from CME Engineering from Mr. Iskin. And does he tell us that the bond is wrong? No. I'd like you to look at his August 20 letter of 2020. And his response says, and I'll read it. It said, "The responsibility of the borough to convey or determine the amount of the bond. It's not the responsibility of the borough." That's what Mr. Iskin says, not my words. He says, "The applicant is to provide a reclamation cost estimate certified by a licensed professional engineer." We supplied that estimate. And now Mr. Iskin says he agrees with the approximate three and a half million. So it's not unlike everything else. We submitted a binder, I assume each of you have seen it, with lots of information and documents. And all of it is found to be appropriate. Our estimate of three and a half million is found to be appropriate. But what is the difference here? The difference is that that three and a half million, I'd like you to read, please, I think it's so important to look at this. If you look at the last response on page one of Mr. Iskin's August 20 letter, "No engineering study has been provided to demonstrate that 3,507 cubic yards of fill is available onsite." Well, he first says, "It's our obligation to give you a cost estimate by a licensed engineer." He admits we give it. He admits that they then review it. And then he says there's no study. If he had requested a study, or if he wanted backup, we would certainly have provided it. At this late hour, certainly just before this meeting, he's saying that he doesn't have it to support it. We have supported every document. We have supported every number we have ever given you. The suggestion is that you have to go out and you have to buy the material from some other sources. That's not true. We have an engineering study to indicate that all of the material is onsite. It does not have to be purchased elsewhere. And if Mr. Iskin can't come to that conclusion without a study, we're prepared to provide that study. That's number one. Number two, the suggestion at the bottom of the report by Dykstra that Mr. Iskin refers to about material coming from offsite at no cost. I have previously stated, and I don't know how many times in written documents, that quarries are repositories for fill. And that within the state of New Jersey, the need to have repositories for fill is so monumental that people pay to have fill deposited within voids, within quarries. So it is a two-pronged thing. One, we have enough material onsite to do the reclamation, and we're prepared to show that, although it hadn't been asked for previously and is not required by your ordinance, but we're prepared to do it. And two, the nature of the marketplace is that there is fill available where people want to bring it onsite, and that's without cost. As a matter of fact, people paid to have that done. So where are we? With respect to the bond, we have provided a bond from 1996 until the present, and you have never rejected that bond. You have never told us, we don't have one document that ever said, "The bond is unacceptable." We don't have any estimate by you at this point. If you look at the August 20 letter of CME Engineering that Mr. Iskin wrote, it doesn't say that our bond currently is insufficient. What he says is, and I'll read it. He says, "The cost estimate is drastically underestimated." He doesn't like the estimation. He doesn't give us any alternate estimation. "You have no information before you with respect to what the bond amount ought to be. And we are prepared to show you that the bond estimate that we have provided is fair, reasonable, and more than adequate to support the reclamation plan." And quite frankly, this should not be an issue as between us. It's simply a matter of engineering and analysis, which has not been done by the borough. If you require further backup, further information on it, we're prepared to give it to you.
Mr. Iskin, do you have any response to?
Before he responds, I just want to clarify one point as to when Mr. Iskin first notified the quarry that their bond estimate was insufficient. That was by later date, July 17, 2019. I'll read from the letter. "The cost estimate as presented is unacceptable. The estimate must be based on costs the borough would incur should default occur. CME recommends 2019 RS Means unit costs adjusted for this area to be utilized. The estimate should be detailed and include the volume of backfill material, topsoil available onsite, show its location, and the volume of material to be imported. CME will not agree that offsite backfill material and/or topsoil can be obtained at no cost. The estimate should also include the cost for itching and/or other water control structures as required in comment." On October 29, this was reiterated in a letter to Ms. Lengemeyer, the copy to the quarry personnel. "I do not accept the bond estimate as presented in the renewal, and likewise, not agree with the bond submitted." So this is going on since, lasts well into the summer of last year. But my point is, it was laid out in detail by CME as to what is required.
I disagree with you.
Well, now, I'm reading from the letter. You could disagree to what the letter says, but I'm reading from it. Okay? All right? Okay, now, Mayor, you would ask Mr. Iskin to comment, I'm sorry.
Yes. Mr. Iskin, do you have any comment?
Sure. Actually, on August 15 of 2016, in the prior renewal, I sent a letter to the borough that said, "The cost estimate should be based on anticipated depths and limit of excavation will exist at the end of the license period. The cost estimate should identify, and the engineer should certify to, the location, volume, and availability of all soil and backfill material proposed to be used to rehabilitate the site. The borough will review the rehabilitation cost estimate, and when acceptable, Saddle Mountain will be required to propose the performance bond." So I've been raising this issue for going on four years now. Now, prior to that, if you recall, well, you may not recall, as the quarry was excavating, they were excavating to what my understanding was the final depth of the lake feature. So that was the point, you know, there was no fill required because they were excavating to the bottom of the lake. Well, since that point, we are now 120 feet below the bottom of the lake over the last seven years or more. So that's why the reclamation bond is not the same as it was years ago is because there's much more material now that needs to be brought in to reclaim the site than what existed prior to the last several years.
I'd just like to address that. And that's really the difference between Sean and us. We know each other well enough, and we know where the differences are. And our position is, and I said it in my two letters that were last week and the two today, is whether or not you have to go out and acquire at cost the material to backfill on the market. And we disagree with that. And I think that if given the opportunity, we would show you, we would have our engineer provide you with the information that would show that the material is onsite and it would be available to backfill that without creating another hole. Our engineers have said that. And quite frankly, I'm willing to comply with Mr. Iskin's letter of August 20, which says it's not the responsibility for the borough to determine the amount of the bond. It's not your responsibility. It's our responsibility, as you say, to give you the estimate. We gave you the estimate. You don't like the estimate because you don't think that the estimate is based upon a fact, and that fact is whether or not there's enough material onsite. I'm prepared to show you that by a certified engineer. If you still disagree, well, then we have an issue. But I'm prepared to show that. If that's what your letter says, that's what we're prepared to do.
I did comment. As I understood the letter, what the letter was getting at is that our engineer doesn't design things. The applicant designs, presents credible proofs, the engineer critiques it, okay, and determines whether it's credible. What happened here is, if you look at Mr. Iskin's letters, he's saying that is not credible, that if there's a deep fault, somehow all this fill is acquired at no cost. It's just not credible. He says there are sources to figure out how much that costs. Remember, if there's a deep fault, the borough is left in the lurch, in a sense. If there is a deep fault, okay? There's a cavity, okay? It's exposed. It has to be filled. It has to be reclaimed. It's the borough's responsibility at that time. The borough looks to that bond, that bonding company, okay? If that bond is inadequate, if that bond says, "Oh, fill can be acquired at no cost," and it turns out, "How could fill not be acquired at no cost?" And the borough's going to pay for it. The taxpayers are going to pay for it. They're going to pay millions to do that. That's what it is. Now, you know, you've heard Mr. Vogel, okay? You've heard Mr. Iskin, you've heard, you know, my comments, to be honest, et cetera. It's your decision what Mr. Vogel is saying. He can show, he could bring in engineering and show that his position is feasible. But that's for you to seriously consider, okay? You want to take that into account, all right? You have Mr. Iskin's critique of things, okay? But I think you have all the information now in the record, unless there's further information you want.
I'd just like to, Mayor, I'd just like to make one rejoinder to Mr. Kleemack, which I, and I don't generally disagree with him, and I certainly don't do something on a personal basis. But I don't think it's fair for him to say that Mr. Iskin has determined that our analysis is not credible. That is not what he said. He said he disagrees with it. What he said, and I'll read from his letter, "No recent engineering study has been provided to demonstrate that 3,507,500 cubic yards of fill is available onsite." So he didn't say we're not credible. As a matter of fact, he found us credible when he said he agreed with the amount. He found us credible when all operations are found to be in accordance with your ordinance. Look, I want to reach a resolution. I want to reach a resolution fairly. And I want to reach one which is to the benefit of, certainly to quarry, but not to the detriment of the borough. So I make this one suggestion, and you can accept it as an offer to attempt to accomplish a middle-of-the-road. And that is, the quarry is operating consistent with your ordinance. Extend the review of the bond aspect to allow us to provide, and I'll quote from Mr. Iskin's letter again, "A recent engineering study to demonstrate 3,507,500 cubic yards of fill is available onsite." And I commit to you that we will provide such a study. We will do it quickly. And we believe that the result will be one that supports our position. If Mr. Iskin and the borough then continue to depart from that and don't agree to it, you still have your opportunity to take whatever action you have. But it gives us the opportunity to address it based upon what was in Mr. Iskin's latest letter of August 20.
Can I say a couple things?
I'm sorry?
Is that Mr. Brain?
Yes.
Are you going to, is Mr. Brain going to testify, Mr. Vogel?
Pardon me?
Does Mr. Brain want to comment? Did I hear him?
Yeah, that was me.
Does Mr. Vogel, does Mr. Brain want to testify? We'll swear him in.
Certainly, I'm not going to say no.
All right, Mr. Brain. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Would you state your name for the record, please?
Scott Brain.
Okay. Your testimony about to give this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Will help me God, yes.
Thank you.
I just wanted to raise a couple points. It's just so, I'm not sure everybody's aware. The bond estimate was, you know, we provided was, I think the last one was close to 4 million, four and a half. I'm not really sure. But the bond estimate is, and I believe your ordinance even says that it's based off material that's available in the surrounding area. So there's millions and millions of yards of material in our market area. A bond is based off the actual cost. I mean, Sean is talking about an estimate, like a construction estimate, and that's what you bond? Ultimately, you bond the construction costs of a job. So you don't just, you just don't pull the numbers out of, you know, I understand how Sean came up with a number to do an estimate, but that's not what you base a bond off. A bond is based off the actual cost. So Sean came up with a $56 million bond estimate. Well, you know what? For $56 million, we might as well, you know, default, bid on the job and do it for $56 million. I mean, there's no way that it's going to cost anywhere near that number to reclaimate that site. One, the material is onsite. We never said it wasn't onsite. So that's the position we've had for 20 years, that the material's onsite, even when it was a lower amount. And the numbers we've been using, they probably should have been raised, but they're the same numbers that we've been using for 20 years, and they've been approved, those numbers, even though you disagree with them. But we have used those numbers. So I guess that was, you know, really what I wanted to say. You know, the bond, we're nowhere near on the same page on the bond amount. And we have materials sitting at all our locations. We have millions of yards of material. We could backfill. And I know it's not relevant, but if we bid that job and use market area pricing, you actually pay to get rid of material. We would actually have to pay a site to take more material. That's how it works in New Jersey and New York. I don't know how it works in Pennsylvania, but we're not in Pennsylvania. Now, I just, you know, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. So with $56 million, we don't really have anything to talk about. I mean, we, it's just, it's an astronomical number. Now, anyway, that's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klemak, do we have to go out to the public with this now? Do we have any?
Yes, we have public portion.
Public portion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Heck, do we have anyone that...
Yes, we have several people in attendance. If, if they would like to comment, if they could raise their hands, we'll go one by one through the public if they would like to provide any input.
Okay.
While, while they're raising their hands, I don't know if the mayor and council has any questions or comments.
Yeah. I think, Mr. Heck, I think you ought to reserve until you hear from everybody before you comment, council comment, including the public.
Okay. All right. Mr. Heck, can we hear if I'm not...
No one has, at this point, raised their hand to talk. If anybody would like to speak, if they could raise their hand, or I could go down the list if you would prefer, Mayor.
Yes, that would be...
Okay. First person is Mr. Brain, who spoke. Al, if you would like to comment, you just have to unmute yourself. Okay, I guess he doesn't want to comment. Okay, Jennifer, you just had to mute, unmute yourself if you want to speak.
I may have missed part of the meeting, but I'm just interested in hearing more about when the monitoring wells will be installed.
Excuse me, could you just state your name and address?
Sure. My name is Jennifer Svalante. I live at 79 Berg Meadow Road in Ringwood, New Jersey, directly across from the quarry. And I am wondering when these monitoring wells will be installed, as my house that I just moved into two years ago shakes severely to the point where things have fallen off of my wall during blasting. And while I understand the quarry has been there for quite some time, I am concerned about the integrity of my well due to the severe shaking during blasting. So I'd like to hear a little bit about when that might actually occur.
Mr. Vogel, can you answer that?
Yeah, just, just to enlighten everyone, the ordinance requires that we, we do wells testing and inspect the houses within 500 feet of the quarry. We've done it on two occasions, and the wells that are, the monitoring wells, we, we did provide a plan. We went out and got noted experts, which I believe Mr. Iskin recognized as being, if not expert, knowledgeable in the area, and I believe that Mr. Iskin approved it. And if the bond issue is resolved on a reasonable basis, we will then, consistent with, with the issuance of the license, address the installation of the wells.
Thank you. I have a question. Where are the monitoring wells supposed to be installed? A number of, you know, about, I'm not sure, at eight?
Either Mr. Brain or Mr. Iskin can better tell you where those wells would go. I'm not quite sure. They are in a location to monitor water levels, not, I believe, within the quarry itself, not off the quarry, not, not outside the quarry. And they would just, those, they would monitor what the water levels would be. If you want a clearer statement, you know, that would have to come from Mr. Iskin or Mr. Brain.
Mayor, we should probably go through the public portion and get all the questions, and then, so we don't end up with a back and forth, but...
For what it's worth, I have that information pretty handy right now. There were three observation wells proposed. One along Westbrook Road towards the northern edge of the quarry, one along Westbrook Road towards the, below the entrance of the quarry, and then one at the south, about the most southern corner of the quarry. And the purpose of those was they would be between the quarry excavation and the neighboring wells where the water level could be monitored, and if we start to see effects on these observation wells, that would give us reason to pause and evaluate if quarry continued in those directions, is it going to negatively affect the neighbors that would be on the other side of those wells. And as Mr. Vogel stated, I did approve that plan in 2016, and they need to be put in.
Thank you.
Jennifer, do you have anything else, or...
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Mr. Veith?
Can you hear me, Scott?
Yes, we can.
Carl Veith, 150 Dale Road. You know, the, one, a couple of quick comments, because we kind of broke off to wells versus bonds here. But just in general, when, when we talk about the proposed monitoring wells, and when, when you mentioned like the south-southern border, I'm not quite sure where those things are on the map. You know, my concern would be, how close in proximity would it be to what is essentially my property line, where at every meeting subject, you know, I mentioned how there used to be a two-acre pump on my property, which is now, you know, 50 feet, well, 100 feet and about six inches deep, you know? And during many periods of time of the year, there was no water in it at all. So I would certainly want to see a monitoring well in close proximity to that area, because there it's certainly already shown that the water level has changed. In regard to, quote, "Our own wells," and the quarry came to test our wells, well, quite frankly, that, those tests, you know, I think provided very little insight, which really, you know, came down to, yep, I have a well in my house, and you can fill up a five-gallon bucket of water with it. Not, what's the volume of water in my well? What's the depth of my well and the column of water that currently resides in it? And those are the exact things that monitoring wells can provide, right? Where's the water table now? Where was it five years ago? And then you can see if the water table's changing, and hence, it's becoming a, you know, is, is a looming problem, which is, every resident on my street, our worst fear. In regard to, you know, the reclamation, yeah, it's quite obvious, you know, that there might be a $3 million or 3,000 cubic yard difference in opinion, you know, and kind of some perspective on that. You know, if, if we're 15 yards per truckload, you know, that's 233,000 trucks needed to bring in that material. I'm sure the cost of that is quite high, you know? So, you know, I, I kind of would, would imagine that a bond of 3 million certainly wouldn't do it. Is it 60 million or whatever thought would come around? I don't know. I haven't heard what, you know, that projected price truly is. But just sheer number alone, it's staggering, right? You know, if you had 100 truckloads a day, you know, it would probably take you eight years to bring that material in. So it's, it's, it sounds as though it's, it's a monumental amount, and I can't imagine how it could be done cheaply. And that's really just the material needed for reclamation naturally.
Mr. Veith, you muted yourself halfway through there.
Yes, Scott, I'm, I'm not quite sure where I broke up, but...
Just a second ago.
Okay, then, you know, I think that, you know, that, that the bond is certainly, the bond amount based on that amount of material is, it's kind of staggering, the amount of work involved and the amount of material. I guess, I also kind of wonder, when we say, you know, "Material's on site," well, if we took out 3.5 million cubic yards of material, how could it be on site? Where, where did that material come from? You know, so, being a layman, I, I don't really know how that's, how that works. It's, it was removed. How could it be on site if it were removed and sold? So where, where are you going to get that material from? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, we have a few more. Dirk Brain and Josh Brain, I'm not, I'm sure, I'm not sure that they want to speak or not. They haven't raised their hand. I'll ask them. Dirk, do you want, would you like to speak?
Yeah, it doesn't get you so.
And how about Sue, if you would like to speak, just unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hey, just for the record, please. Sue Gendarelli, 157 Dale Road, Ringwood, New Jersey. I guess my only comment is, the last meeting and the last few meetings I've been at, I've heard that in order to get the license renewal, you have to put the monitoring wells in. So it sounds like, again, they didn't do it, so I'm not sure what the discussion is about anymore then. Is that it? That's it?
Okay, thank you.
And the last one is Mr. Brain, would like to speak. Scott, you're already in.
Raise my hand.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Just a couple other comments with Carl. Carl, the, the bond is based off the existing conditions of today. Yes, at some point, there won't be material on site to reclaimate the property, but at this point, we only, we only have to reclaimate the existing area that's excavated below, you know, roughly 370. So there's, there's, there's millions of tons of material on site above the 370 that you can use. So there's basically a hill that's above the 370. We would use that hill to fill in the hole. So at some point, though, that hill will be gone, and then there won't be material, and everything would have to come off-site, would all have to be imported. As far as the wells, the protocol, you know, just so people know, that that protocol, the well studies that we did...
Bring it in.
Excuse me? The, the well studies that we did 20 years ago were based off an agreement that we had with the borough. So that's where that testing came from. We just didn't make that up. The two engineers decided what they wanted to do, what they thought was the proper way to test the wells. And really, testing the flow rate and finding out how many gallons of, and actually, a well yields is, is useful information. So basically, what you'll find in Ringwood, there is no water. You know, most of the water is all surface water. Now, the, the, you know, the pond by you, which is, which is...
I don't know what that was.
Yeah.
Mr. Brain, are you still? I don't know if we lost Mr. Brain.
Yes, that's what the sound was.
Okay, Mayor, there is nobody else in the public that would like to speak at this point. If someone does raise their hand, I'll let you know, but as if, if Mr. Brain comes back, I'm sure he will.
Okay, so we have to make a motion to close public portion? I have a motion to close public...
Councilman Ferretti?
Yes.
I'll make a push.
Okay. Can I have a second?
A second, that. Councilwoman Landis.
Welcome.
Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Matty Olandis?
Yes.
McCracken?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Brain just sent a message that he got cut off, and he's logging back in.
He's logging back in?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need to let him finish? Yes.
I don't know that he's back in yet. It shows him still, but...
Do we have any comments or questions from the council?
Before you do, Mr. Brain is back.
My laptop, I thought it had it plugged, and it ran out of batteries.
Okay.
I just want to say, you know, the, the monitoring wells, we, we've actually went back out to the market based off the last meeting. We've got prices. We're ready to go on that, but we, you know, we, until we settle the bond issue, we're not really, you know, it's a problem for us to go spend, you know, a lot of money to put wells in, and then we're going to end up in court over, you know, the bond. So we really want to put everything to bed altogether. But the, the, the pond that Carl's referring to, which is known as dry, dry pond on all the maps, you know, has nothing to do with the quarry's operation. That's a, that pond is, that's perched, that's on top of the, it's actually sits on top of the land, and it's nothing to do with the aquifer connect that wall to the quarry. So the wells that we have put in, and obviously Sean knows this inside and out, because in Pennsylvania, most quarries do have wells. It's no secret. They would, they would, you know, they would measure the aquifer, and if, you know, there's a change in the elevation. Currently, we have three wells on site. Actually, I take that back. One well is off-site, it's on a house we own. We have, we have not seen any impact to any of those wells in a few years. You know, just for this fortune now. But anyway, that's that. That's all.
Thank you.
Mayor Carl Veith has raised his hand. I, I know you've closed public. Do you want to allow him to respond to that, or...
Yes, sure.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Veith, I'm, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me, Scott?
Yes.
You know, that, that pond has existed since I was a kid. You know, we ice skated on it, boated on it, swam in it, you know? And as the quarry excavated and approached closer and closer to the border of the property, that pond dried up, and you can clearly see, and you've got to remember, you know, they're excavating within 50 feet of the property line. So right below the bottom of the, the pond that used to be there, you know, to a, you know, a very big extent, now they're, what, 50, 80, 100 feet down? And you can see the water running out of the ground within 75 feet of this, where the pond was. So, you know, to, to kind of say that it, that it's a dry pond and it has nothing to do with the excavation, I mean, that's total crap. How, how it was ever allowed, and if, unfortunately for me, it was the previous order when that pond, you know, got drained by quarry activity. If it was me and my property at that time, I'd probably be a very rich man, and, and the thing would be very different. And it always puzzles me, because I could state it every single time. If the EK were involved, and you say, "We had this body of water, you know, that supports animals, plants, et cetera, and the quarry operation drained it?" How's that not like a dead stump? It, it baffles me, you know? After 20 years, it's still difficult to get it out of my head why it's, I can state it till I'm blue in the face, but it has very little impact, you know? So now when we start talking... You know, so now when we start talking about monitoring wells, now, you know, am I going to have water in my well? It really concerns me, you know, and truthfully, filling up a bucket of water from my tap and saying that's what my well can provide, you know, I mean, that has no basis in fact. What errors we may have made in the past, you know, are past, but how your well reacts is a function of the pressure that your pump and your tank system are set up under, how many gallons a minute you can pump, and if you had a larger pump, you could pump a lot more water out of that well, you know, and how that fluctuates in the water table and the column of water, that's what a well study does, that's what monitoring wells inform. But running a tap and filling a bucket just means, yep, I have water in my well, that's truly all it proves, and it might prove that, yeah, my pressure is between 40 and 60 pounds, and going through a half-inch copper line, I can fill a bucket up this fast at 40 pounds. Nothing to do with the real, with the real situation, how much water is in the ground, how high is the column of water in my well, and has it been deteriorating through time? Only when you run out do you know, or only when you poke well and measure it continually, do you have some idea of what the water table, impacted water table it is. There's no other way to do it. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, may I have an opportunity, since you gave Mr. Vee the opportunity, just to respond to his comments?
Yes, Mr. Vogel.
Just, just let me say this, there are only two issues before the, before the council now. Mr. Iskin has determined that the quarry operates consistent with the ordinance, so it doesn't have to do with the operation. Mr. Vee raises the issue with respect to his well. We did an analysis under an agreement with the borough before you adopted the quarry ordinance and tested every well within 500 feet in accordance with the protocol set up by your engineer. After you adopted the ordinance, you put in the ordinance that we had a provision to check all wells within 500 feet, and having done it, we submitted the old, the original ones, and at that point, the borough said, you know, we'd like you to do it again. We didn't say no, we did it again. Since that time, we have no, we have never had a failed well make a complaint based upon the quarry operation. That's number one. Number two, Mr. Vee made the comment that if three and a half million tons, and I'll accept his arithmetic, if three and a half million tons had to be brought in from off-site, you would have 232,000 trucks, at 100 trucks a day, it would take eight years. I don't know if that's correct, but I'll accept it for, for the sake of discussion. My question to the borough is, is that what you want? Our suggestion to you is, we have it on site, you don't have to have 100 truckloads a day for eight years. You can have it done on-site, and that's the way it's done in New Jersey, and that's the way it's done throughout the state, and you will find that to be true, and if you go to other municipalities in New Jersey and look at it. Maybe it's not what they do in Pennsylvania, but it's what we do here in New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now to Mr. Hatt, you going to say something?
No, Mayor, I'm going to just manage the meeting, you go ahead.
Do we have any comments or questions from the council? Deputy Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, all of my questions have been answered, testimony received here tonight.
Okay. Yes?
I'm trying to think of a resolution. I can't get past that the monitoring wells were agreed to in our 2016 license and have not yet been installed and are now being held out as a condition of disapproval. That's, that's patently unacceptable to me, I can't get past that. I, maybe there was some regard, so that's the one issue, the monitoring wells, and I'm just not getting past it. The other issue, the other open issue, which is about the performance bond, maybe there was a, you know, there's, there's some misunderstandings on that. I want to give the quarry every opportunity to prove their case, that, that they could actually have this material on site, or what that would look like, what would that actually mean? Would that mean more blasting? How many years would the work that had to do? It's, it's still not free. I can't imagine that it's free, but they're making, they want to make that, I think they have to make that, I won't see them make their case before, before I reject out of the hand. They don't give us any, the $1 a yard for material to be imported and placed and compacted is, that doesn't sound right by any stretch. And if that, even if the material's on site, it's still going to require moving it from one sector to another. There's still, you know, there's costs there, certainly more than a dollar a yard. So I don't know, I don't know how much of the council feels, I don't want to extend this thing again with extended, you know, we also have a history of doing this here, it's the nature of the business, of giving another extension, possibly only a 30-day extension to solve this, to solve this bond issue, and let's just get this off the table, one way or the other. Maybe then, I wouldn't be voting to, to give them a three-year license with the monitoring wells as a condition. The monitoring wells would be installed before their next three-year license is approved in my, you know, if I had my way. So I don't know, I'd like to hear from the rest of the council, what do they think? The 30-day extension, make your case, show us where this material comes from, show us that the cost estimate you provided is, is valid, and we take it from there.
Mr. Hatt, do you, does any other council members have any comments?
Hi, Mayor, it's Ryan. My thoughts echo those of Deputy Mayor Spear. The fact that we're still waiting on something that was agreed to in 2016 that's intended to protect our residents, as we're talking about it now, kind of boggles my mind. A point of history for, for my own clarification, because I don't have it in front of me, I just, I'm not sure at what point in time it was agreed upon and allowed to go below the bottom of the lake, how far, how far back was that permitted?
I don't, I think that was the result of litigation. That's my recollection.
Yes, it's correct.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. And again, regarding the, the bond and the default, my understanding of a scenario where this bond is required to come into play is because the quarry is no longer operational or in a financial position to fill this hole for the benefit of our residents. So I want to make sure that the figures that we're talking about don't rely upon any material on site being there without a guarantee that it remain, as well as all the operational costs to put it in place, because we are already going to be, obviously, in a not-great position having to coordinate this in the absence of the quarry. The last thing we want to do is leave our taxpayers on the hook for the bill.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilwoman O'Keefe? I agree with Councilman Bolton, it seems Mr. Iskin has told us that this reclamation bond has been an issue for a long time. I hear Mr. Vogel saying that for 20 years, his license has been renewed, and we've never truly addressed this prior, so I think now it's time to resolve it, because to leave our taxpayers on the line for that would be unconscionable. And again, 2016, we required monitoring wells, you can hear the concern and terror in our residents' voices that it would be their greatest fear if their water was impacted, so I, I don't feel comfortable renewing it without those monitoring wells being in place. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Just Councilman Ferretti?
Okay, do we have a misunderstanding relative to whether the fill is going to be present or needed to be brought in? That's a big monetary difference. The way I see it, on a quick Google, fill is $7 to $12 per cubic yard, and that seems awfully cheap, I can't imagine I get a one and a half tons of fill for 12 bucks, but that said, that puts us at the low end, $20 million a park. That's where somebody mentioned 56 million, Sean's number was 56 million, all right, he may be used on high end, but whatever the case is, we have a big difference here. So they're going to need to show that study, they're going to need to do the study to prove to us that is present, and clearly, this is going to need to change over time. As you say, it's the work that would need to be done today, that we're dealing with today. So, pending that study and the wells, which is a safety issue, like you said, for their neighbors, and times are the essence of that, if they had installed that in 2017 after they had done the study and that was proved in 16, we would have years of records to look back on. We don't have that. And I was under the impression that these wells would get installed between the last time we spoke and now. So I'm disappointed that the wells are not present, and I find it hard to believe that any, any movement happened towards the wells being put in since the last meetings we have, so. Come back to me with the wells having been done, and then we have something to talk about. Right now, I'm just disappointed, and I see myself at another extra meeting over this, what are we doing? Nothing. You're just happy to be working for another 30 days. That's, that's not acceptable to me. I guess you need, you need the fire, right? The fire under your rear end, like, oh, now we're not working, so we're digging wells. What are we doing here? We got to do something. That's all I have.
Thank you. Well, my feeling is, I'm not happy with the quarry. I haven't been happy for a long time with the quarry. They were going to do the monitoring wells, then they've given excuses why they're not doing them. I would like to deny their rear extension to renew their license.
Mayor, if I may as well? Madam, the floor, thank you. I would say the bond and monitoring wells are both issues pertaining to the safety and well-being of our residents, both financially and from a well-being standpoint. I'm also not at all comfortable leaving the borough open to serious financial implications if the quarry was deceased to somehow exist. And I agree with Mr. Ferretti, Councilwoman Ferretti, that the wells not being installed, there wasn't even a movement. The point of what we have extended those 90 days was to seek some movement, and we have not even discussed that there was any movement at this point, and that is, that's of concern. You know, our, first and foremost, we are here to make sure that the safety and well-being of the citizens of Ringwood is being met, and that's, that's a problem to me, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, if the council's done, I just have one, two quick comments, if you, if you want. One, this being an important meeting, and the last meeting being an important meeting, their engineer was not present, and we're, we're taking testimony from people who are saying they can provide this, but the quarry's own, Mr. Brain testified himself that while there might be that material there now, as they're continuing to dig, that material will go away, so we can't rely a bond on, for something that is, they're going to slowly erode, so you would have to include a bond that would include the entire amount of material that they're going to be excavating in this entire, in this entire application. So those are the two comments that I have. The engineer should be here to testify, and we have our engineer here, and if in fact they, they felt it was important enough, they would have run.
Mayor Spear, do you have anything else? Deputy Mayor Spear, do you have anything else?
I don't know, I do understand that that's comment, though, is that that is true. I just recognize that, you know, should we deny the license, we are in court, and I haven't liked going to court, and don't intend on liking it anytime, and don't want to, don't want to go there. I'm inclined to say, if we grant another 30-day extension, the quarry can provide us the engineering study and the backup to the satisfaction of our engineer, that this fill material can be acquired, transported, placed and compacted for the costs that were described in the, in that, in that estimate. They solve that in 30 days, we come back here in 30 days. If that issue is solved, I'd grant another 30-day extension on this license for them to install the monitoring wells. I would not grant the three-year license until both these issues are, are resolved. I, I, Mr. Ferretti is correct, my impression was that after our last meeting, that 90-day extension was plenty of time to get these issues resolved. I'm disappointed that they're not, but my disappointment don't matter. What matters is, is we have to decide what to do right now. So I would make a motion for a 30-day extension to solve this, to resolve the issue of the reclamation bond, or performance bond as we call it.
Excuse me, that would be 30 days for the quarry to present engineering support for their proposal? Is that it, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, yes, exactly. With the, with the plan showing where this material is on site and where we'd be coming from and where we'd be going, and if they can back up their, their costs for acquiring all this material and putting it in place for a dollar a yard, make those proofs, and hopefully, we can have this resolved.
Didn't we give them 90 days to do that?
Yes, Mayor, I thought so, and here we are again.
So is that the motion you're making?
Yes, yes, Sean.
Okay. Roll call. Any other comments?
Need a second?
We need a second, Mayor. No second?
Was there a second?
There is not a second.
So, do we have another motion on the floor? I'd like to make a motion to deny the three-year extension and to, motion to extend them 90 days to get their operation in order, close down. Go ahead, isn't it? I'll give you a second.
Is that Kathleen?
Councilperson O'Keefe.
Did you ask if I gave a second?
Yes.
Can I have a?
Oh, excuse me, before you do that, Madam Mayor, the reasons weren't cited for the denial, now that can be handled in various ways, analogies at a planning board or, or the adjustment where the board would act and then it would be memorializing the resolution the following month detailing reasons.
the following month detailing reasons. I just wanted to let you know that, because the way, the, the resolution just denies it and requires operations to cease in 90 days, is it, is it based upon the performance bond issues we discussed, monitoring wells issue we discussed, and/or other issues?
Monitoring, one's bond.
All right.
Monitoring, performance bond.
The issues that we discussed.
Right.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion, a second, and then the discussion?
So, for Nicole's perspective, because Nicole, so you're, what you're saying is, you're going to do a memorializing resolution, so she's not going to be writing anything?
I would suggest that, that, that there'd be, whatever your decision is, let's see what it is, but whatever it is, and you follow with the, you authorize a memorializing resolution regardless, regardless of what you're going to do, you haven't voted yet, so we'll see. But, it'll be memorialized then, okay, whatever it is.
Good. I have a roll call.
Just to, oh, Mayor, just if we can have a small bit of discussion to clarify the, the differences between the two motions, and I know that the original one from, from Deputy Spear didn't have a second, but particularly the timeframes involved, if we could clarify Are we giving them 90 days now to resolve things, and I believe the deputy had proposed 30?
No, 90 days to close out their operation.
Do they have the option of coming back to us with that study and proof that they've been moving forward with the wells, one way or another, and we could reinstate the license, or how exactly would that work? Or they're just done?
They could alw, they could always reapply, of course. Okay? At any time.
Okay.
Because, I mean, a denial is not a denial in perpetuity, that's why I say it's for certain reasons. If those reasons are cured, then they can reapply.
Good. I don't have a...
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I have a question for the council. You have a question for, for council? So, if, as, as Deputy Mayor Spear had said that we could obviously end up in court, so then, what happens from there, council? What would, would somebody else's determination then?
Yes, a judge would make, make, make a decision as to who is right or wrong under these circumstances.
Understood.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Well, what's, what's...
Mayor, run the roll call.
If I, if I may, I guess, Mayor, we have, we have, you've already put forth that we would deny the quarry license renewal based on the inability to provide us with monitoring wells as were requested in 2016, and as per the, the latest 90-day extension that we have given them, as well as the bond issue, is that what I, is that what the motion is on the table?
Right. So then, we need a roll call.
Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spear?
No.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Matty Olandis?
Yes.
McCracken?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
May then, you would all authorize a memorializing resolution at the next meeting?
Yes.
Motion second?
Have a motion for the next meeting? I'll make that motion for the next meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Matty Olandis?
Yes.
McCracken?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes. All right. So that would be our next meeting, which is...
September 15th.
September 15th.
September 15th. Okay. Do we now have to go into public portion, general public portion?
Mayor, you already had your general public portion.
I'm sorry?
You already had your general public portion, Mayor.
So far, we have to...
This was a very specific here, this was a hearing as opposed to a regular council meeting, so we are concluding.
Okay.
She need a motion, a second, sir.
Anyone else have any other comments? We can have a motion to adjourn.
McCracken, I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Councilman...
Ferretti, second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Matty Olandis?
Yes.
McCracken?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.